We will now call the special meeting of the Waco City Council on August 27th, 2024, to order at 6:01 PM. All council members are present except for our council member Andrea Bearfield. The rest of us are here. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of United States of America. You too are a brother for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
The first item on the agenda is the work session, item 2024-630. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Mayor and Council, we've got Blue Koslicks, our CFO/Assistant City Manager, going to make budget presentation. Much of this will be information you've been seeing over the last few months, but since it's our hearing night, we thought it'd be good to walk through a few slides on what's in the proposed budget. Blue?
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, good to be with you again tonight to determine the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget. As the City Manager said, this will be a lot of what you have seen over the last couple of weeks. We have not had any major changes, Mayor and Council, but I do want to go over some of the key elements, key takeaways from this budget. First of all, this budget is a total of $584.5 million for the entire city. That it does include a $202.5 million balanced general fund. This budget does go after some of the strategic objectives and goals that the Council has laid out, especially funding for our long-term commitments. Those are still in this budget. The existing capital projects that we have committed to, those are still funded, they will continue on as scheduled. There is a 7.2% increase for fire and police. That is in accordance with the agreement that we have, and there is also built in a 3% general employee compensation adjustment. The budget itself is built upon a tax rate of 75.5 cents per $100 valuation. Mayor, Council, this is the lowest that we've had in 16-plus years. It is the same rate that we are currently on for fiscal year 24. As far as discretionary outside agency funding, as we've discussed over the last few weeks, the city has done a lot to cut our budget, our operations within the general fund. For this year, we have built into the budget level funding for those discretionary outside agencies to allow them to continue to operate. And for capital improvement, I do want to note that even though existing projects and existing funding is in this budget, new funding and new requests for additional funding for fiscal year 25 in those capital budgets is not in this budget right now. That's going to be worked out over this fall, and we hope to bring you something back to approve either later in Q1 or at the latest Q2 of fiscal year 25. So we will bring that back for new funding, additional funding, additional projects. We are just not at that point where we can recommend new funding for any projects at this point. General fund, looking at, we have a debt capacity probably around 35, a CIP capacity of about $35 million. So that's what you can kind of expect, that range for projects for the general fund. All right. Big table, a lot of numbers on this one. The fiscal year 25 budget revenues, again up at the top, the general fund departments, general fund itself in that budget column for fiscal year 24-25. That's where we are coming up with the $202.5 million budget. The two biggest increases, again, in your property tax based upon the valuations of the city and your sales tax. Sales tax is starting to level off, but we still are seeing an increase to where we can budget for about $1.4 million higher than last year's budget. The big decrease in there, the $7.3 million of transfers really relates to a one-time spend or use of additional reserves that we had in fiscal year 24. That's not being programmed back in to use reserves in fiscal year 25. All right, moving on to the budget expenses. Again, we're showing that the general fund has dropped $1.2 million in expenses from what was adopted in fiscal year 24. That is after the increase, like we said, with the 7.2% going to fire and police, 3% for general employee compensation adjustments. We have really worked hard to find some operational efficiencies in this budget, some different ways of doing things, making our money work for us, stretching as much as we can in our operations. And again, even with the adjustments to salaries and some of the other programs, we're able to reduce our budget by $1.2 million for that general fund dollar. Overall, the rest of those, water and wastewater increasing, 11.6 million. A lot of that has to do with the operations of those and the way that we're expanding, building out for those operations. Solid waste, again, with the build-out of the transfer station, the new cells that we're, the new landfill that we're developing, some of those operations are increasing. Everything else really, for the most part, is either going down or staying fairly stable to the previous year. Do you want to bring this up? Mayor and Council, fiscal year 25, these are the changes since we initially filed the budget on July 2nd. With the staffing shortages that we had in this department, we weren't able to get everything in at that time, so what we had were the major funds. So the other funds, that long list, everything that we have presented to you over the last couple of weeks, these are just the base revenues and expenses for those minor funds. The general fund, the only things that have really changed, we had some dollars reserved in what we had for contingencies, so we knew that there was a potential for us to have to hire 15 full-time employees for animal services if the Humane Society had pulled out. That did end up happening, so we went ahead and adjusted our budget to account for those 15 new employees. So we just shifted money between the contingency and animal services. So you'll see the in and out there. Fuzzy Friends was a new one that we're adding into the discretionary funding for outside agencies. That's been funded by the city previously, but it's been in a different area, different funding source, so we're just calling that one out specifically now. So that's the only change on that one. And then there was no fuel allocation for the beautification department, so we're adding that back in. So total net change for the general fund since we filed is only $270, so very, very, very little change on that aspect. Mayor and Council, we've seen this once before. I want to bring it back in front of you. The property taxes, this maintains, this budget maintains the tax rate of 75.5 cents per $100 valuation, again, lowest in 16-plus years. What we're doing in this is really capturing the full value of our new growth and our new development that's come on and trying to put that back to work. If you want to look at the 3.5% maintenance and operations allowable increase by state law, we are only using 0.12% of that 3.5% increase allowed. So you'll see from fiscal year 24-25, same tax rates, but really shifted that almost one cent. So for the 75.5 cents that our residents pay into the city for their property tax bill, 60 cents of that will go to maintenance operations, 15 cents of that will go to debt. Sales tax, again, we're starting to see, we've seen good collections over fiscal year 24. However, we're starting to see those stagnate, a little bit of flattening in what we're seeing year-over-year increases, so we have taken a little bit of a conservative approach, only budgeting in about a 2.5% increase from the fiscal year 24 budget. Mayor and Council, the state required budget language on this, what the state deals with in the law is a revenue increase total, so it doesn't matter what the rate is doing, it's all about the revenue that's brought into the city. So this budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $6.6 million, which is a 6.1% increase. And again, 2.9, almost 3 million of that is from new property that was added to the rolls this year. So this proposed tax rate, even though the tax rate that we built this budget upon stays the same, it is considered a tax increase. So for our tax year 24 rates that were calculated based upon the certified values of the city, no new revenue at about 72.7 cents, the voter approval tax rate at 77.9, almost 78 cents. We had an unused increment, which is the carry forward from the last three years where we didn't go to that full 3.5%. That is equivalent to 1.8 cents. So our total voter approval tax rate is close to 80 cents at 79.8 cents. And again, we are proposing a tax rate that is in between the two, so it's not, no new revenue, but it's not exceeding the voter approval tax rate. So we will have to hold a tax rate public hearing and a vote on that at your next council meeting on September 3rd. What it does to our single-family homes, in fiscal year 24, the average taxable value In fiscal year 25, that has jumped up 9.5% to $225,692. So whereas in fiscal year 24, the city of Waco taxes on a single-family, the average single-family residents out there in our city was $137.42 of change, putting the total at $1,555.45. That has gone up in this year because of the appraisal impact, that 9.5% increase to $1,703.97, so just shy of a $150 increase year-over-year. Some of the other notable rate and fee changes that are built into this budget, the water, the volume metric or the usage rates, so the more you use, the more dollars that you are going to pay for the usage of that water. That is increasing except for the 3,000 to 8,000 gallons. That tier is remaining the same. And just for reference, Mayor and Council, the average that we go on in the city of Waco is about 8,000 gallons per month per household. Wastewater rates, the base is increasing as well as the volume metric, and right now the base on the solid waste collection fees related to the transfer station and the landfill is also going up by $1.41 per month. Lastly, the last notable rate change, fee change, is the street maintenance fee that we have proposed in this budget. What we've really come to realize over the last few years is our system demand is really exceeding the current available funding that we have, and it's really putting a lot of stress on the general fund and the operations that the general fund has to absorb. So the total system replacement value of this is about $2 billion. Right now, we need about $56 million annually in order to just keep up with all the maintenance that we need. We are not even, we're getting there, but we're not close to that $56 million annually at this time. So this street maintenance fee is another revenue source that we can bring into the city to be able to help catch up and get ahead of a lot of this, the street maintenance for, before it becomes a full reconstruction need. So the revised methodology that we have proposed from what it was last year when it was originally put before you, we have really taken a different methodology in this that lowers the fee on a single-family residential to about $2, down from where it was at 10, so that was an 80% decrease. Non-residential, there's an equivalent residential unit amount that is multiplied by the usage and the demand that that puts on the roadways, a little bit more difficult to explain, but what we have done is take that new methodology and reduced the non-residentials by anywhere from 44 to 99% from the originally proposed amounts. So a pretty substantial decrease. Now, this does take what additional revenue we can bring in, down from where it was to about $2.6 million for this next year. So the street maintenance fee bringing on an additional $2.6 million that will be used directly back into the streets. We do have a website out there, very informative, goes through everything in depth. That website is in that first bullet point. Do want to call out, because we have been asked this, that there is an appeals form if a business out there thinks that they are being charged in a different manner or if they want to relook at something, there is an appeal form that they can fill out and send that in. Also, if anybody wants more information, we have a phone number and an email for the street, specifically for the street fee. So overall, the taxpayer impact increasing by about, or the total impact is about $19.51 per month on your taxes. That's $12.38 per month utilities and an additional $7.13 per month, so almost an additional $20 per month for that house.
Mayor and Council, this is the remainder of the calendar, so today here the special call, city council meeting. There we go. All right, August 27th, there's a public hearing on this. The following action would be the adoption of the fiscal year 24-25 budget and capital program. On September 3rd, there will be a public hearing on the tax rate, the emergency reading of the tax rate ordinance. Then that is when we will also hold the public hearing on the street maintenance fee and the first reading of that street maintenance fee itself. September 17th, the next city council meeting, regular city council meeting, will be the second read of the street maintenance fee. And then if everything is approved by council on October 1st, everything that we're discussing will be effective. So Mayor, wrapping up with the five takeaways, the total budget, the commitments, the tax rate, discretionary outside agency funding being kept level, and a reminder that we will bring your new capital program, new dollars to you later on, hopefully later this calendar year, if not slightly into the next calendar year. I will pause here, Mayor and Council, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Thanks, Blue. Any questions or comments?
Well, I think I knew this before, but can you remind me, of the $56 million we need for street maintenance currently, how much are we spending currently?
We have anywhere programmed around $30 to $32 million right now this next year.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just mention here, again, we talked about this in previous council meetings, that the three major factors that are working for us or against us. Property tax growth, which is around 4% or 5%, in previous years has been double digits, so we're kind of dealing with that headwind. Sales tax growth, which in previous years was the same, we were dealing with about 1% growth there. And inflation on top of that, so both sides of the, the income and the expense are kind of getting pressured here this year. But I really, I think we're well-prepared. In the last few years, this council, I think we have a very strong balance sheet. We've had the best cash reserves that this city has ever had in each of the funds. So I think we're prepared. We have unassigned reserves that are higher than at any time in the city's history. I think we have a very strong roster of capital improvement projects that have already been funded and approved and are just waiting to be worked on and completed. As I've said before, the last couple of years, we've also invested in systems, processes, and software, so we're really focusing on, this year, I'd like to say we're focusing on efficiencies and improved services, city services. So that is, we will continue to deliver best-in-class services and strive for best-in-class services. We'll continue to fix the streets. As you said, we're spending, our biggest expenses are on streets and services. We looked at expense controls, and we did a good job across the board of cutting expenses 8% across the board, and we kept the utility bills increased below the inflation rates. I don't know if you, you didn't include that slide in this one, but just to remind folks, it is still below inflation rates, even when you add on this nominal street fee that we're including. So overall, I like the budget. I do just want to say one word, I can say it either now or when we take the vote, just on the budget for outside agencies, this budget has the largest commitment to outside agencies in the history of the city. The 1.8 million for that grouping of 12 agencies is, we didn't change it from last year, and so we've had it at a very high rate for these last two years. And we appreciate the work and the success of those 12 agencies, and I have the highest respect for their leadership teams at those agencies. And so we look forward to continued collaboration with these folks as we all work together to make Waco the best it can be. And as our general fund obligations and tax resources become a little tighter due to inflation and local market drivers, as I mentioned, and as costs continue to increase in our core initiatives of streets improvement and public safety, in future budgets, we'll be reviewing more closely our financial commitment to outside agencies. I just want to repeat, as we said last week, the current budget approval does not cover any programmed reduction to outside agency funding, but staff and council will be studying ways to address strategic support of outside agencies prior to next year's budget. So good job, Blue. I know you're new, this is your first, kind of, we caught you in the middle of this budget, but you've done a great job of picking up the ball and helping us get to the finish line here. I appreciate staff's work on pulling all this together. We will now recess the work session and reconvene the regular session at 6:23 PM. And the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-631. City Manager Ford. We go straight to the resolutions? That's you again, Blue.
Yeah. I have any updates, but I think it's to you, right, Blue?
No, sorry, this one is on the...
So there's no presentation? Because it's like...
Strange charge.
Go straight to the resolutions. No further presentations, and we're ready to go. All right. Do I hear a motion on Resolution 2024-631?
Move for approval.
Second.
Hear a motion in a second? Any further discussion? I kind of said my piece, just now. Please poll the council.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye, that resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, 2024-632.
On this one, do we have to approve this procedurally twice in a row for adoption of the budget?
I believe that is correct.
Through two series of motions.
Correct. Yeah. Yes. So is there any?
All right. All right. Mayor and Council, this is a public hearing to receive comments on the adoption of the city of Waco Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program for fiscal year 24-25. In accordance with Texas statutes and the city of Waco charter, this budget supports council's strategic goals and efforts to build a high-performing government that promotes equity, enhances quality of life, and facilitates economic development. It continues investments in infrastructure and sustainability, ensuring Waco remains safe and resilient. The proposed tax rate is 75.5 cents per $100 valuation, the same as last year, which is above the no-new revenue rate and below the voter approval rate. A public hearing and vote on this proposed tax rate will take place on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. That public hearing will be open to the public at the Boski Theater of the Waco Convention Center, 100 Washington Avenue, Waco, Texas. A limited number of council members may appear via video conference. After today's public hearing on the budget, the council will consider action to approve the operating budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 24-25, including fee schedules, glossary of terms and acronyms, and certified tax rate worksheet. Council will consider authorizing the city manager to expend funds included in the operating budget without further council action for items specifically listed in the budget adoption resolution. When the budget requires raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous years, Texas law requires a separate record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the operating budget and CIP plan. Since the budget does raise more revenue from the property taxes than last year, a separate vote is required. The city council will now conduct a public hearing on the proposed city of Waco Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 24-25.
Are there any questions for staff? I'll now open a public hearing for comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak regarding this item? Seeing no speakers, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024-2025 budget and capital improvements program, including fee schedules, glossary of terms and acronyms, and certified tax rate worksheet, and to authorize the city manager to expand budgeted funds as outlined in the budget resolution. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Please poll the council.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye, that motion passes. We will, finally, I will entertain a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the operating budget and capital improvements program for the city of Waco fiscal year 24-25. Is there a motion?
One move, what the mayor has said.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Just the, you know, the point of clarification that while we are voting on this as a property tax increase, we are not seeking to increase the rate that we are charging our citizens to make a ton of money this year. It's just happening to be the way in which we have to state this for legal purposes, so. Probably could have said that cleaner, but you guys get what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please poll the council.
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye, that motion passes. The next item to consider is Ordinance 2024-633. City Attorney, pardon?
Ordinance reappointing Robert R. Garcia as municipal judge of the municipal court of the city of Waco, Texas, for a term of two years, which shall be from June 1, 2024, and shall expire May 31, 2026. Determining the salary of the municipal judge, appointing a qualified person to serve for the municipal judge during temporary absences, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing for an effective date, and finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 6-0 council vote on first reading on August 20, 2024.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval on second reading.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Please poll the council.
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye, that ordinance passes on second reading. The next item on the agenda is the hearing of visitors, and during the hearing of visitors section of this agenda, we provide an opportunity for the public to present concerns or address issues that are not matters for consideration listed on the agenda. The council is unable to conduct a discussion, but will listen, ask staff to look into concerns, and provide follow-up. Please provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. We do have a registered speaker here. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments, and you'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you are forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meeting so that all... in the meeting so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the sergeant-at-arm shall remove from the council meeting any person who, while addressing the city council or while attending the council meeting, any person who makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, any person who becomes boisterous, or any person who makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, anybody who claps their hands or stomps their feet, whistles, yells, or makes similar demonstrations. And we have one card here. Mr. Ephraim Herring, can you please approach the podium, sir? As you get to the podium, just state your name and address, and you have three minutes, Mr. Herring.
My name's Mr. Mayor. I'm at 1044 Chestnut Street. I'm coming to you again, I came to you August 1, 2017, I bought the house at 1046 Chestnut. As of today's date, it's 2,591 days that I've been denied access to the house that I built. It was built by Neighborhood Waco that is not in accordance with city regulations or plans. And we got a major problem here because you told, I've been told several times when I come to the man, so you're going to have to point somebody to come tell you how to solve the problem. Problem's still there, 2,591 days. I'm trying to figure out if your crew inspectors gave Neighborhood Waco and Neighborhood Association Services a certificate to a property that's not completed in accordance with site plan, and y'all signed off on it. Why now can I not get a certified copy from the city? Because y'all saying it got signed it. And I know each one of y'all took a note to obey, do, to enforce the city regulations, state regulations, US regulations. The problem I got here right now is Neighborhood Waco would never got paid if they had not got that document from the City of Waco. Now, I'm out, I cannot live in the house because the City of Waco can charge me anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 a day. So now, we're looking at 2,591 days, I've been denied access to a house that I built that I paid $109,000 to Neighborhood Waco for. And it was kind of interesting, because I was going through my files of investigation, and I had, there was a comment about that, that said about the CEO of Neighborhood saying that I was getting more than I paid, trying to get me what I paid for. The house paid, they paid $109,000. The house appraised $77,000, which means automatically looking at $20,000 under, but the house was, they got paid. So now, where's the property margin at? Who's losing money? I am. Can't even live in the house. House sits there, it can sit there as long as it can. So my question is simple. Where is somebody who come to me and explain to me and show me the documents that give them authority to give them a document till they get money out of my account? They got $27,000 out of my account. If they had, if y'all had left it alone, by the contract, we would be in court right now. We've been in court 2017, and it's probably been resolved. This problem has not been resolved yet. But yet, I'm still paying taxes, paying taxes left seven years. I get denied tax abate because the house didn't appraise it $90,000, they decided they're going to build it at. So now, I'm losing money constantly because I can't live in the house I had built. So I'm asking again, who is going to put it up there, $109,000, to get this right? Who's going to fix it? God don't want to cause the problem. I didn't. God bless you, I'll be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the hearing of visitors? Seeing no one, we will close the hearing of visitors, and we'll now go to council reports, council reports and requests for scheduling future agenda items. Are there any council comments tonight, guys? Nothing? Are there any council requests for scheduling future agenda items? Nothing. We will now recess the regular session for executive session as read into the record by the acting assistant secretary at, what time is it? 6:35 PM.
hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, transfer lift station enforced main project, projects one through three, gravity and siphon, lift station, enforced main. We are now in executive session.